Alrighty, we've got seven o'clock. Call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, good evening. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Cook?
Present.
Mrs. Thompson? Present. Mrs. McHugh? Mrs. McHugh with us tonight? Hey, Mrs. Durst?
Present.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Present.
Mrs. Rosenoff?
Present.
Mrs. Drewick?
Present.
Alrighty, thank you. Adoption or amendment of agenda? I've got a couple of amendments. Under new business F, as in Frank, building issue. I sent an email to the board here just a few minutes ago. Just like to discuss that. And then G, I believe a couple of board members reached out to Mr. Goodme to talk about Tate's play. So would like to add that as G, as in George. Are there any other amendments to the agenda for tonight?
I do not have any, Mr. Cook.
Alrighty, thank you. Entertained a motion to adopt the agenda as amended then?
This is Nancy. I make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Is that Mrs. Durst?
Yes, it is.
We have a motion by Mrs. Thompson, supported by Mrs. Durst. Go ahead and take a roll call, please.
Hey, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. McHugh is absent, I'm assuming still. Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosenoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Drewick?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Motion carries. We're on to registration for public comment. So any member of the public that wishes to address the board later on in the meeting, we would ask due to our online meeting format that you register at this time. What we would need is just the last four digits of your phone number and your name so we can recognize you at that time. I'll pause just a moment. If you wish to speak, please just unmute yourself and let us know and we'll get you written down here. Give just another... Just another minute here. Anybody wishing to address the board? Please unmute yourself. Okay, hearing... No one signed, signing up for public comment. We will move on to agenda item six, the consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda, you're approving the minutes from the regular meeting of January 25th, 2021, as presented. You're also approving general fund bills in the amount of $175,091.65 in AP payroll checks in the amount of $19,440.56 for a total of $194,532.21 with checks numbered 65838 through 65913 and ACH transfers in the amount of $492,428.28 for a total of $689,934.49. Check numbers 65806, 65889, and 65896 voided. An additional bill in the amount of $14,488.55 with check numbers 65914 through 65926, and no checks voided. Under personnel, resignation of Sean Connery, VA Van Officer, Alyssa Troya, daycare caregiver, Jordan Scopus, Longton, a preschool sub-aid, the hiring of Kim Dreyer, who's a rehire elementary kitchen cashier, additional assignments, Adam Ricker, JV baseball coach, Adam Walsh, seventh grade boys' basketball coach, Logan Clare, JV softball coach. Change in assignment, Monica Vickers, sub-aid to long-term preschool sub-aid. So I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll second that motion, this is Nancy.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Motion by Mrs. Durst, supported by Mrs. Thompson, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Take a roll call, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh is absent. Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosenoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Drewick?
Yes.
Alrighty, motion carried. We'll move into reports. Tonight, let's start with... Let's start with Mrs. Hankins, elementary principal. Take it away, Mrs. Hankins.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a crazy February at the elementary school with the excitement of Valentine's Day and Hundreds' Day and obviously midwinter break and the snow day. So it's kind of been a little hectic over there on top of everything else that's been going on in our COVID world. In February, we really start to focus on what next year will look like, as crazy as that sounds to start thinking about. I included in my report a sample of what our early education sign-up, postcards will look like. Those will be arriving on February 26th. Those will get sent home with each student and then we go around...
Hello?
Mental kindergarten or kindergarten for fall of 2021. We've set the date of March 24th for our kindergarten kickoff and then the preschool kickoff comes later in April. At this point, the plan is to hold those virtually and then hopefully come August, we can get some of those students who have not attended our preschool programs into the school to be familiar with the school if they haven't yet had that chance. So I'll continue to update you on more information as far as numbers and what those presentations and dates will look like. We were able to season a school improvement meeting where we went over our NWEA data. We're very excited about the growth, which I was able to speak about a little bit last time. And I included that data again in here, the presentation. We had another round of SATs on February 11th. We were able to dismiss a lot of students out of SAT, which means our win-time interventions are successful for those students. Thirty-one of the students that were brought in the previous round of SAT are no longer students that we would consider at risk of not meeting grade level expectations. We will continue to monitor those students closely and watch them. However, they're not our most intensive needs of students at this time. I've also included in my report our writing goals. Although our lab school project is on pause, our teachers continue to work with our students on these four goals. I also continued the monitoring forms in there so you could take a look at what we're using to monitor their progress and how we're doing towards those goals as a building. And I think that's about it for the most important things that are going on. I'll gladly answer whatever questions you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hankins. Any questions? From the board?
Thank you.
Thanks. Postcards look great.
Thank you.
Alrighty, let's move to... I guess we'd better move to high school, junior high and high school. Mr. Caraffa, are you on?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brindman is here. You hear me?
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, school board, for having me on tonight. Just a couple of things to throw out your way. In the report, Mrs. Hankins was talking about the crazy things going on around town and, of course, our midwinter break, you know, was extended by a few days because of winter weather. So things just kind of started getting back to normal here this week. We've opened a good full week of instruction. Couple of things, a big thing that happened today, actually. I called Mr. Goodme not long ago. Something we've been planning for next year to open up is to have Eric Hippel come and speak with the community about a few things, mental health and things like this next year. I found out, I got word today that we were able to secure grant money for this... This performance, not performance, I don't want to call it performance, but this presentation. Pretty excited about it. And I also was told that the... They will be, the grant, the Sinclair, the community foundation will be also... There's another wing, I guess, of their grant giving group there that will be looking at our proposal on Wednesday to try to determine if they're going to give us the second half of the money for it. So we could get fully all the money for it. So we're excited about that. Just found that out today, so that's exciting thing. A couple of other things to talk about, NWEA map growth. There's some data right there. Mr. Corbett, teachers have done a great job of getting our students all together and tested. We do have some data that we can, that you can take a look at. That's also combined, there's also with Mrs. Hankins there as well. So a lot of good stuff in there for school, district-wide, if you take a look at some of that stuff. We're going to begin, we're already begun the process, like I told you last, I think, board meeting of showcasing our students' growth in the cafeteria with our map wall. We're working on some rearrangements in the design, but that should be done, I'm hoping, in the next two weeks. So it'll be a cool way for our students to track their progress in the cafeteria and kind of maybe cheer each other on as they go from test to test. We'll be able to redo that year by year. So it should be a cool project once it's finished. I'll have pictures for everybody or you can stop by the cafeteria and see that. One other thing I want to talk to you about, also Mrs. Hankins mentioned the school improvement team. We have a meeting to talk about our goals. We really had a great meeting last week and we are looking towards revamping some of our goals. We have a different format this year with the My SIP program. So we're still getting an idea of how that's going to look. But possibly by next board meeting, I might have some, preview some of the goals for you guys to take a look at for the high school that will line up with our district goals as well. And that's just about it. You can kind of breeze through the rest of that stuff there. We had some observations and some fun things going on with kids at the high school. And we're just chugging along here, trying to get to the next stop, which would be somewhere around spring break time. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm here for those.
Not really a question for me, but nice job in getting Mr. Hippel. So for those that don't know who Eric Hippel is, he was a Detroit Lion. I believe he's played nine years, which is pretty strong for a professional athlete. I've actually heard him keynote before and he has an incredible story about depression, suicide prevention, mental illness. His 15-year-old son unfortunately committed suicide. And he is, I believe he works with a depression center at the University of Michigan. If you Google that, I think you'll find a video that features him. And so, yes, he was a professional athlete, but his, the way he can speak to kids about mental health and what he brings to the table is huge.
Yeah, we're very excited to have him coming out. So he'll be, what the day will entail is a morning or early afternoon presentation for the students. We will have the staff in in the afternoon because it's the first day of school. One of that first day of school is going to be there. And then we have a performance for the parents at the end of the night as well. So it should be really a cool, a cool performance or a whole, a good day for this family. It's wonderful.
Excellent.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Um, you know, I think this is great, everything that they got, Mr. Cole, you know, submitted to our school, you know, coming up in the fall. I guess my biggest question is currently, Mrs. Thompson had mentioned at the last board meeting about some programs through community mental health, you know, Combs County, about Sinclair County, some grants that are being offered. I guess my biggest concern is literally doing currently for the students instead of waiting until the fall. And I'm not sure many of you are aware that we had a scary bull suicide that just happened last week and a senior, and it has affected some of our students at Memphis. They were friends with this individual. And I'm just very concerned about the mental health and well-being of our students as well. And I really don't want to wait until the fall to do something or put something in place. With that said, if there's any suggestions or anything, I mean, I can do on my end, I would more than glad to. I know at one point, Mrs. Hankins had a new practitioner come in, I believe, and spoke with the teachers on signs and symptoms that looked super in the elementary population. I was curious if that was ever done in the high school. And it's not, it's something we possibly can do because we do have, you know, a year into this pandemic and it is very concerning.
Yes, you know, at the beginning of the year, we had a gentleman named Roy Burton come in. Roy talked to us about mental health and taking a step back for our teachers, how to, how to kind of treat ourselves. We developed a thing called the Memphis Three Step, which is breathe, body, and mind. It's a three-step that Roy talked to us about for, you know, taking a step back, you know, taking, minding your breath, you know, breathing, knowing what your body is doing and then clearing your mind and kind of removing yourself from some situations that may become hostile or toxic or one of those things, however you want to say it, in your day. And what we were also taught was how to deliver that also to the students. So along with our PBIS, our matrix reviews, we do that as well, you know, at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, we talked about our Memphis Three Step, our breathing and things like this. So that's one thing. We also have, Mr. Goodme, I think, talked about last, maybe last meeting or the meeting before, Miss Maura McCartney Young. She comes into us. She's on a grant from St. Clair Risa. She comes into us and she's a school social worker and has a, she works with the students nine through 12 in the high school, generalized students. We also have Mrs. Wilkinson, who shared between both buildings. She works with our special education students and the social worker as well. Ms. Gadkey's been working overtime, triaging those students that needed. So really, it's been a team effort. Everyone's been doing a great job. Even our college advisor, Ms. Nowitzki, although she's not a social worker, she does, she's able to handle a lot of those issues that maybe Ms. Gadkey would handle as far as with, goes with college and getting prepared. So Ms. Gadkey can focus on some other things such as, you know, student mental health and things like this. You know, even until recently, when Officer Gunnery just resigned to look for, take on a new position, I mean, he was even part of that group. And Mr. Officer Delucky does the same. So, you know, we're not, obviously, it's a tough situation for everyone, including adults and students and parents, this COVID thing. But I think we have a lot of tools in place right now. I think then again, we're going to have Mr. Burton come back within the next, I believe, could be our April or May professional development. He'll come back and talk to us again, right? And then we get a big shot with Eric Hippel to start off next year. So I think we're really trying to spread it all out as much as we can for everybody right now. So there is some good things going on, I think, when it comes to that, to some mental health and those things.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Mr. Cook, I have a question?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Um, I was just looking at the growth data and the economically disadvantaged students that doesn't have growth data for the high school. And that used to be about a third of the population. I was just wondering if we are still looking at that since these are the kids that have the most roadblocks to learning.
Yes, that is one piece on it, Mr. Corbett, that we're talking about today. We're trying to still get that data because what we have to do is, I don't think that the NWEA data will decipher who's, you know, disadvantaged. So we have to take the students and then match them up with, you know, with that list and then go from there. So I can get you some of those data, some of that info, but I could tell you that we do have a special education data. I do believe we do have, no, I didn't populate it in there right yet, but I will update that for you as well. But, you know, I believe it would probably be similar to what you were saying. You were saying a third. I would, I would be, I would guess it would be similar in that area, but I hope it would be lower than that, obviously. But I can get you that data. We know that's one of the areas where we struggle with our students. But again, NWEA is not going to say who is economically disadvantaged. But I will, I will go ahead and get that data for you too.
That would be great. I think it's just something that your school improvement team or your, you know, when you're setting your goals, they really need that data because those are our most struggling students. And especially with COVID, they're the ones that have probably not had as much support as we would like to give them. So I think we need to pay them a little bit of extra attention right now.
Yep, I definitely agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. And Mr. Caraffa, anything else for Mr. Caraffa tonight? Alrighty, let's move on to athletic director, Mr. Oki. Are you with us?
How are you, Mr. Cook? And hello to all the school board administration. Been an interesting first couple of weeks back into athletics officially. It's been exciting, that's for sure. All our winter sport teams were able to begin actual practices a couple of weeks ago. We start off with a fast start. Now, we, in a very short period of time, had to start playing events and games. And all our programs really jumped out of the gate pretty quickly. And like I said, it was a very exciting time. Our wrestling started off with a victory. Our boys and girls basketball teams had victories in the first week. Our girls bowling team has shown a lot of success already and are looking to do a deep run, I think, in the state playoffs. Our high school cheerleaders, unfortunately, have not been able to do any competitions because of the COVID situation. They were canceled. But our junior high program, I'll tell you, the future looks bright. They've done a great job. They've actually competed, competed the last two Saturdays. And in those last two Saturdays, they've come in first place, one at Montrose High School and one at Lakeshore, some Class B or Class A schools. And I was second guessing if we should go to that and the girls won it. So I didn't look real good in my expertise at cheerleading, that's for sure. But the girls did and they came up with two very impressive victories. So our sports go across the board. Our numbers are doing a great job. Our junior high girls and boys basketball teams are, it looks like we're going to have four teams and they're going to start playing games this Saturday. They're actually going to fulfill their seasons on Saturdays rather than during the week. And the biggest reason was concerns from the ADs is we didn't want to have a bunch of people in the gym at the same time. You're starting to share gyms with practicing as well as games and referees. So we moved into Saturdays for this year and I think it should be an exciting thing for them. They're going to play two games each on every Saturday for the next three weeks, four weeks. So, you know, we've had things going pretty smoothly. We were also given the opportunity to COVID test our wrestling program so that they would have to wear masks during their events. And so we had to, Mark Pringle and myself had to take a test in order to administer the testing. I tell you, Mark ran with it, did a fantastic job. We tested, they come in the locker room, we sanitize them, we, you know, check their temperature right off the bat, ask health questions, and then we administer the testing in the shower room. And it was going very well. We did have, unfortunately, a situation that stalled our wrestling program for 10 days, but they're back in full force. And the couple of meets that they missed, we're excited to try to make those up. So hopefully they'll give every opportunity to fulfill their season as well. I have to thank, if we miss it, but in sharing with the board though, that I tell you, if it was a time that everybody worked together, that was it. They told us that we could have a test on Wednesday in order to wrestle on Friday and Saturday. So we had to order the test, take the test. Mr. Goodme ran to Risa to pick up some tests that were delivered there so that we could get them in time. I ran the K-Pak. Mark Pringle was kind of by himself with his assistant coach administering the test. And so it was definitely a time that everybody was working together. And it came off very successful. And I tell you, I was really proud of how everybody's responded. I also have to thank everyone and let the board know that, you know, we have had a couple of situations. And the reason I don't believe that it's exploded like it may have happened at some other schools, everybody's jumped on board, from our high school office to our administration, Mr. Goodme, the coaches, the parents. I tell you, everybody has really jumped on board to make sure we're doing the right thing and to support us in doing the right thing. And that's why we still have high school sports and junior high sports going on at Memphis because so many people went over the bubble, you know, and it's just fantastic. And it's very humbling to see everybody go to work together. I even, if you've been to any of the events, you know, we really enhanced our athletic events. We have, you know, boosters and parents that have gone out and people that have purchased the Fat Head that have been in our bleachers. You know, and other schools are like, wow, that's pretty nice. We're sanitizing the chairs, we're sanitizing the locker rooms before each game and the parents are helping out. It's really been a great time to see how Memphis has stepped up and supported our athletic program and our kids and our schools. So I thank everybody and humbly say thank you. Again, all our athletic programs have started off very successfully. We're very excited about that. I think that we're doing the best that we can do at this time regarding the COVID situation. And the couple of negative things that we had that had slowed the process or some of the events, everybody did the right thing, which is allowing us to move forward and continue to have sports. During that time, we also have our softball and baseball programs that are doing their preseason workouts over in elementary. They're doing a great job over there, the sanitizing of equipment, not allowing too many people in the gym at one time. We separated practices from anywhere from 15 minutes to half an hour. So again, we don't have 30 people in a locker room or 20 people in a hallway or even the weight room. So we've spread out and I think people that, the coaches have worked very well together in doing that and they're getting the most out of the kids in a shorter time, but yet a safer time. We did have a very exciting weightlifting seminar a few weeks ago where we brought in a gentleman who Mr. Goodme had spoken to and I've known for, I think, I hate to date myself here, but I've known him for about 30 years, a weightlifting specialist and who actually helped us in getting the equipment, the necessary equipment in the weight room. And they did a one-hour seminar for our coaches and our gym teachers that showed up. And we had some kids doing some illustration of it and implementing of our new bigger, faster, stronger program that we purchased to help develop our athletic program all the way from high school seniors all the way down to junior high. And we're very excited about that. I can tell you that the in-season sports are utilizing it daily. The out-of-season sports, which is basically spring and football, are itching to get in there. We did step them back until March 1st so we get a little better handle on all the way. The COVID seemed to be spreading, so, but they're still able to work out. But we just kind of reduced the amount of people in the gym at one time to one team at a time, just so we have time to sanitize. in the gym at one time to one team at a time, just so we have time to sanitize and clean after every practice. I think that's really helped us. If anyone's had an opportunity to watch our streaming service, which we're very fortunate to have, not every school does have that, we're very fortunate to have it. We had a few kinks, like a lot of schools, and the biggest unfortunate problem was that, you know, I think there were just so many schools purchased at one time, they really didn't get the information out to us, and it was really in their hands. All our communication was through emails. And at first, we couldn't get it on. And I will tell you, the good thing is that Brian, with all his hard work, we did have everything in order, everything was in place. It was just a matter of, to be honest with you, them coordinating their, our system with, with their system, which was out of our hands. And once they got that, the games are up, and actually just recently, through, I think about, Brian could confirm about 50 emails, some of them not so nice, but at the end of the day, to the point, and we now have the scoreboard on there, so people can see what type, what the score is and the time in the game and stuff like that. So we're a tremendous resource. I can tell you, some of our sport teams are using it for scouting, we're able to watch other teams play, and, and that's just been fantastic, you know. I think to take a negative and turn it into a positive, as I said earlier, to reiterate, our administration, our office workers, our custodians, our coaches, our players, and our parents have all worked together and very hard at keeping any and all COVID concerns to a minimum. And I feel that's where we are at right now. So I again, thank everybody. The last thing I, I hope that we'll be able to go over will be later on, will be my wish to get confirmation that we can move forward with our co-op for football with Landmark High School. It's been something we've been trying to do for a year, that COVID did derail a little bit, but because of that, I think we would really enhance our, not only football, but athletic program and our school, our school support out there. So that's about all that I have, other than to say that, you know, please be patient with the, with the schedule. It's, it's an ever-changing thing daily. I think we had three changes today, because you've got so many schools that are getting shut down, or athletic programs are getting shut down because of COVID. We're changing dates and times and whatever we can do to get the kids the every opportunity they can do. But I'm, I'm trying to stay on top of it daily, and, and I want to thank everyone that helps me and assists in that. So that's all I have for sports.
Mr. Oki, Samantha Bobstein here. I've seen how K-PAC has canceled their pay-to-play. Has that been something that we have discussed at all with the season, and like you said, how the high school cheer is not even able to compete yet? It doesn't seem right to be charging students pay-to-play when their season's not even guaranteed, that they're gonna have a chance to even compete or play. And that's not even just for the season, that's gonna be the entire year. Has that been discussed at all?
We did. We, to be honest with you, a couple of weeks ago, before we even had any of the concerns, just in the actual shortens of the season, we had met, Mr. Goodme and I had spoke about, and I think Sandy was a part of that, reducing some of the costs. I mean, you know, again, when, when they told us that we could play, I think it was, it was on Sunday, and then Monday we're practicing, and we had games in three days. So I know that a lot of the packets got put out immediately, because we didn't do any pay-to-play, Miss Bobstein, until they were actually able to play. And then we just put out their actual normal prices at that point. But then, and, and we were dealing with quite a bit, you know, having to get the testing, and how we can do the testing and all that, you know. So those went out pretty quickly. What we did do in a very short period of time, is we were able to take, catch our breath, we just made a, I think, a pretty fair assessment of where we were at, at that time with the seasons, okay? Like, you know, wrestling really took a hit. I think they lost like 40, 45% of their season. At that time, we didn't anticipate cheerleading losing anything at the high school level. But they are, they are, I will say, the cheerleading is cheering, Miss Bobstein, at the varsity home games. They can't do away, because that's an agreement that we made throughout the league, no visiting cheerleaders, to try to reduce, you know, how many people can go to the actual games, you know. But, and, and so the cheerleaders are able to do the home game. But we, again, so we reduced the price right across the board. And some of those were able to get out just recently, and some of those are still in the process of being, you know, because, you know, the Sandra Fowler and Sarah pretty much kind of run that. They're having to reprint everything, type everything back up and get that out. And we, I think we pretty extensively covered it last week, and it was going out. Some of them are just gonna be put out this week at reduced prices, considerably reduced prices.
We have, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, we have that, we have an agenda item on that and the football later on.
Okay, we'll address it then.
Okay. I hope I answered your question.
Yep, we'll address it later, too.
Any other questions for Mr. Oki? Alrighty. I see Mr. Coojett's on, Mr. Coojett. Anything from a building and grounds or transportation that you'd like to share?
Good evening. Yeah, absolutely. I guess first and foremost, I have to give the bus drivers a ton of credit here with all the changes they've had to make. Like Mr. Oki was saying, you, you need a pencil and an eraser for all the changes for scheduling bus runs to, to events. So it's been a, a very challenging time for them. They've made a lot of changes, a lot of adjustments, especially with moving to Saturday transportation and whatnot. So, but everybody's on board and willing to transport as many kids as they can whenever they can. So huge shout out to them. The new rugs that we put in the elementary school are doing exactly what we had hoped. They're catching a lot of the salt before it reaches the floors, a lot of the water, keeping the floors a lot safer, so they're not so slippery. And starting getting quite a few quotes coming in now for our parking lots, the roof repairs, or the roof quotes are a little behind with the amount of snow we've gotten. They were scheduled to come out, then we got the 10 inches of snow. They don't want to come out and get on the roof until they can actually see what they're dealing with. So hopefully this warm-up we're having this week, hopefully a lot of it'll melt off, and maybe they'll be willing to come out and take a look. Besides that, it's been an extremely busy month with snow removal. We've gone through a lot of salt, spent a lot of time plowing, so, but other than that, things seem to be moving along.
Do you have any questions? Feel free. Any, any questions for Mr. Coojett tonight? Alrighty, any other directors on other than Mr. Walsh? We'll move to him if there isn't anyone else on? Mr. Walsh?
Okay, hello, everybody. Good evening. Just a couple of highlights from my monthly report. Last month, I had discussed that the state held the revenue estimating conference, and positive news came out of that, that the school aid fund and the revenues coming into the state were much higher than originally projected. And the governor was, was going to be preparing her budget proposal for fiscal year '21, '22. That indeed has happened. The governor has presented her budget proposal for next fiscal year. Couple of main points that came out of that budget proposal that affect the K-12 area. One being that the proposal includes a per pupil foundation allowance increase in the amount of $164 per pupil. That's a good thing. When the pandemic originally hit last year, and then we had discussed this back in August, in September of 2020, things were looking pretty dire, and they were looking for cuts for multiple years. In best-case scenario was to stay flat with no increase, no decrease. So being that the proposal is now an increase of $164 in the foundation allowance for next year, that's, that's good news. In addition to the foundation allowance increase, one of the things that the budget proposal includes is we are going to be reverting back to our normal pupil count calculation, which is the 90-10 pupil count. If you recall, one of the things that was enacted for the current year was a super blend account, student count, to try to minimize the effect of declining student population due to the pandemic. So with next year, this budget proposal would go back to the 90-10. With that being said, the governor has taken into account the fact that there still will likely be some decline in the student population, carryover effects from COVID. So she has actually set aside, included in this, a $200 million, a one-time allocation to be applied to districts with a declining student count as a result of going back to the original student count calculation. Basically, with the anticipation that that will cover about 70% of the loss of revenue that districts across the state are going to be seeing based on their projected student counts. So we won't know what effect that has for Memphis per se until we get the student count and then all districts across the state report their student counts, and then it will be graded to each district equally based on their student losses. But that's a good thing. Budget proposal also includes an increase to the GSRP program. So that is, that is great. That program has not seen an increase in a couple of years, so that will be good. And lastly, also a small increase in at-risk funding as well. So all of these, I will say, it's important to note that they're all proposed at this point. There is still a definite possibility that some negotiations go on between the governor and the legislature at the state level, and, and some of these change. But it, the proposal in itself is, is a positive one for us for moving forward to next year. And I'll be continuing to monitor this and watch it, and hopefully we get some kind of approval fairly soon, and, and they can kind of sort their differences at the state level and, and get this budget approved sooner than later, so that way we can start planning for next year. But I will definitely continue to monitor it and keep abreast of any new information that comes out with that. The other main point that, that came out, and I had talked about it in prior meetings, there was stimulus dollars that was approved at the federal level at the end of December. However, those dollars have not been allocated or issued by the state. They're, they're still kind of hung up at that state level. I was able to attend a meeting this Friday, this past Friday, and there was a couple of members from MDE, Kevin Walters and Chris May from the Department of Ed were on, and they were able to share that at this point, it looks pretty promising on, on what the original projections were, were going to be. And it looks like we, they hope to have an answer here by the end of the month, and get some approvals from the State House and the State Senate, and then they can get those funds issued. But at this point, what it, what it looks like is that original estimates were, were accurate, in that it will be approximately four times the amount of what we had received with our original CARES Act funding. So that equates to approximately $275,000 for, for our district. It's gonna be based on the 2021 Title A allocations, and they're saying that it's, on average, for each district across the state, it's about four times. And then the other part of that is, it looks like the allowable uses will be very similar to what the original CARES Act funding were as well. So both of those, good news, and hopefully we can, again, the House has approved their supplemental budget for this, for these stimulus dollars. The Senate was going to be voting on theirs this week, and hopefully they can come to an agreement, so that way, you know, districts can start utilizing these funds. And I hope to have an answer. Again, like I say, MDE's estimations were that we should know something by the end of the month. And that being the case, I will incorporate these funds into my A2 budget, which I'm currently working on and will have ready for the board at my meeting. I think that's about it for the main highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any questions for Mr. Walsh tonight?
Mr. Cook, this is Laura. I don't have a question, but Mrs. McHugh had messaged, sent me a message a few minutes ago. Did she send it to you as well?
Yes, yes, yeah, I was gonna-
I'm on now. Oh. I'm on with the laptop, so it's working. Great, okay, thanks.
All right, no worries. We'll show her a present. Anything else for Mr. Walsh? Okay. Uh, so no questions on any of the budget reports? I believe that covers all our reports for now. We did not have anyone register for public comments? Do we want to go through, does anybody have any questions on food service or internal accounts? All right, we'll move into correspondence. The Trune School Law Notes, anyone have any discussion on the Trune School Law Notes? The only thing I-
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Mrs. Dr- This is the first time I received this, being my first month on the board here, and that was a very helpful tool to be receiving. Is this something that we will receive on a monthly basis, or how often does this report come out?
Yes, we'll get one every month. And we really don't, I mean, I know I print them and save them myself, but it's just great information, and it, it's part of what we pay for, retaining Trune as our legal counsel. They, and it, and it can point things out. So the student safety zone repealed, Public Act 295 of 2020, effective March 24th. So probably need to look at our Neola policies to see if there's anything in them that would be in conflict with this. I didn't have time to do that today, but we'll have to look at that. And it gives good reminders, too. Obviously, February, that being Count Day was 12 days ago, but it just reminds you of stuff that's going on, and we do get them every month.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anything, any other comments on that? We do have, um... I guess that's a later, later agenda item. We can move on from that. Alrighty. And then we had the article, the NWEA article, entitled "How MAP Growth Helps Elementary School Teachers Differentiate Instruction." So a nice article published on February 2nd. Any comments on that? All right, we'll move into old business. As usual, the Extended Continuity of Learning Plan. We, every month revisit this and reconfirm this each month. So it usually gives us a little update first.
Good evening, everybody. Not a lot of change. The one good thing, though, is that we've seen over the past four weeks is a continued decline of COVID positive rates in our county. On this past Friday, we're down to 3% countywide positive test rates. So that is a great trend to have. We haven't been down at the 3% level since, gosh, probably October. So nice to see that coming down. Like Mr. Oki had mentioned, unfortunately, we've seen a few upticks in our cases at school, but our staff has continued to do a great job of making sure that those students that are exposed and/or quarantined because of positive case, or positive test results are receiving full instruction. Our attendance rates still continue to be very good. And everything that we are continuing to do off our online and face-to-face instruction is working well, as you could see, too, from the data that the NWEA was providing. So my recommendation at this time, that we continue for the next 30 days, provide both online and face-to-face- both online and face-to-face instruction, um, for all of our students, K twelve.
Any questions for Mr. Goodme? More discussion on that? Look for a motion to reconfirm-
I'll make the motion to reconfirm the ECOL for one more month, I believe.
This is Amanda Bobstein, support.
Motion from Mrs. Thompson, supported by Mrs. Bobstein, to reconfirm the ECOL for another month. Any other discussion? Uh, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosenau?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewick?
Yes.
All righty, motion carried. All right, on to new business. A, and under new business, spring coaches recommendations. Everyone's had a chance to review those. They're pretty self-explanatory. So what's your pleasure with the, yes?
I would make a motion that we support the, uh, recommendation, to approve the recommendation of the spring coaches for two thousand twenty-one.
This is the MC, I second that.
Motion by Mrs. Durst, seconded by Mrs. Thompson, to approve the recommendations for the two thousand twenty-one spring sports coaches. Any discussion?
Mr. President, this is Leslie. I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Do these individuals apply for this, these positions?
Yes, um, Mr. Oki, did you, did you want to talk about how that?
I just, just being new to the board, I'm just curious, is this something that, um, do you actually hold an interview process and, and then choose your candidate and bring it to us for approval, or how, how does that work?
Um, yes, yes, hi, hi, this is Drake Oki, Mrs. Rosenau. How you doing? That's a great question. What we do with these that are on there, if you look, uh, ninety-five percent of the people that are on this one here have already held those positions. We, uh, so this is just a renewing of their responsibilities and their contract, I guess you could say, on a yearly basis. We do have one gentleman that, uh, our baseball coach who, uh, retired last year, Mr. Walsh, and he did a fantastic job. And, uh, so we, what we do is we immediately post it internally, which means all scheduled C and Memphis employees have an opportunity to apply for that position. We also put it out on MSSA. Laura does a great job. She gets it out, I mean, by the time she's done reading my email, and in some cases having to decipher it, she gets it out immediately. Uh, and, uh, we started getting stuff on the deed. I mean, I've had people apply for jobs from Taiwan. So it gets out there, uh, for example, like I said, and I also will put it out in certain papers. Um, we've done that at Macomb Daily. Uh, I don't know if you recall, if you noticed back, when we were looking for a football coach from Macomb Daily, we had contacted them. They did a huge two-page article about our athletic program and about our football program. So, you know, papers assist us. And then once we get them, I do contact everyone that has applied. Um, anyone internally, we definitely guarantee them an interview for whatever position is going for, and then we are very selective in who we look at to fulfill those positions. So as a head coach, um, what we do, uh, myself, I usually consult with Mr. Kravva, you know, tell him where we're going, and as well as other coaches in that program. If it's for a JV coach, uh, I will always have the head coach of that program. For example, we did, I'm sorry, I, I do notice our JV baseball coach, who was a Memphis teacher, I met with the head varsity coach, asked him to talk to him, uh, once we got to the, down to the selection of one or two people, and our baseball coach in that situation had an opportunity to interview him as well. And then that's what I do. I make a recommendation to Mr. Kravva, and then we then, if he approves it, we then make a recommendation, uh, to Mr. Goodme, and then to this process here, and this Donald I step, we get in board approval.
Thank you so much, Mr. Oki. I was just curious of the process.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All righty, any other questions? Let's take a roll call vote, please.
Hey, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Epstein.
Mrs. Rosenau?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewick?
Yes.
All righty, motion carried. Six yes, one abstention. We'll move on to the MASB Board of Directors election. So there was a, there is an elections booklet, um, in your packet this evening, and, uh, this is the, um, Michigan Association of School Boards, Board of Directors Elections. And so, um, if you've had a chance to review that, we are in Region Five, which encompasses St. Clair County Risa, as well as the ISDs of Genesee, Huron, LaPierre, Santa lac, and Tuscala. Uh, we have two candidates, uh, to choose from, Janice Holtz, the, from Huron ISD, who is the incumbent, and Martin Ray from Grand Blank Community Schools. Both of them have shared their history and a few points. Those are on, uh, page twelve and thirteen of that document. So our work tonight would be, um, I believe we have until the third, so tonight would be the night to, um, send our vote in for one of those two individuals. So open it up to the group, um, I guess, to discuss, uh, and then based on our discussion, uh, I'd ask for a motion for one of the two. I don't know if anybody knows either one of these people. I personally do not. I believe the incumbent is either a former or current member of Badak School Board as well.
Um, Mr. President, this is Karen McHugh. Um, they both, um, uh, in, in reading them earlier, um, they, they are both also, they have the same certification from the MASB, so, and, and they both have very good qualifications. I, I guess, I don't, I don't know, I haven't heard anything about either of them. I don't know either of them. I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but, um, the one, you know, the one is the incumbent, the other isn't. I, I don't know what, what, it's like, what, what do you do? Which one do you pick?
Yeah, both seem like perfectly nice people. Um, any, any, anybody have any thoughts? But thank you, Mrs. McHugh. Anybody else have any thoughts on, on this?
This is Mrs. Jewick. Um, I agree with Mrs. McHugh. Um, kind of a difficult situation to choose either one, um, to vote on. I really don't have much knowledge on either one of them, except for what's in front of us and what I read prior to the meeting. Um, so I, I'm kind of on the same, same page with Mrs. McHugh.
Okay.
Mr. Cook, the only thoughts that I have are if, um, Janice Holtz is the incumbent, and we are happy with the way MASB is running, um, and she is one of the directors at this point in time, then possibly giving her the support to continue the programs that we have. If we don't like what's happening with MS, you know, MASB right now, then possibly looking into the other person to offer a different set of stuff to go, you know, on. That would be the only difference that I can see between the two, or a way to think about which one we would like to go with.
Good point, Mrs. Thompson. My, my only thought was, uh, Mr. Ray, uh, his school board experience in a large school district, he grew up in a rural, small district. The only thing that caught my eye that was really, that really spoke to me, uh, they both seem to have the same types of certifications and, um, I don't disagree with anything that's already been said. So, you know, at this point, I think it's, it's the pleasure of the board. What would you guys like to do? We, uh, our duty would be to send our vote in, uh, as a group for one of them. So what would you like to do?
Uh, Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the vote for Janice Holtz, the incumbent, um, for MASB Board of Directors.
I'll second that. This is Mrs. Thompson.
Motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Thompson, to send our vote in for Janice Holtz. Any further discussion? Take a roll call vote, please.
Hey, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
So we may have lost her.
Mrs. Rosenau?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewick?
Yes.
Okay, in the absence of Miss Bobstein, we'll just take the six zero vote as an affirmative, so our vote will go, um, in that way. Is that something, um, Ms. Heilig, do you, do you turn that vote in according to the directions in that, um, pamphlet?
Yes, I have a link, um, that I have saved, and I will take care of that this week.
Excellent, thank you so much. All righty, we'll move on to Point C, Hearing Discussion. So, um, just want to kick off the discussion with, um, draw your attention to Policy ninety-one thirty, Neola ninety-one thirty, I believe it is. Um, and that is, uh, under the Relations part of our policy manual. And I'm sure everyone has, um, has reviewed that in the past, but, uh, our work tonight, um, after reviewing all material relating to, um, well, let me go, go back to what a fourth level is, uh, under D, is should the matter still not be resolved, or if it is one beyond the superintendent's authority and requires the board decision or action, the complainant shall request in writing a hearing by the board. The board, after reviewing all material relating to the case, may provide the complainant with its written decision or grant a hearing before the board. The complainant shall be advised in writing of the board's decision no more than five business days following the next regular meeting. Board's decision will be final on the matter, and it will not provide a meeting to other complainants on the same issue. So, uh, with that in mind, I know we have a myriad of documents that Mr. Goodme has, um, has shared with us, and I'm sure everyone has reviewed those documents. Um, they've come in a couple of different emails. And so, uh, as far as our work this evening, um, I want to make sure that we don't, um, we don't debate, um, content of the information that we've been provided tonight. Um, Mr. Goodme and I have spoken about, uh, if the board, um, wishes to grant a hearing for, um, the three issues before us, so I would name them as complaint number one, complaint number two, and appeal number one, um, all relating to the same subject, or the same subjects, um, or the same complainants. Um, that if we, uh, if the board's pleasure is to grant that hearing for, uh, those three issues, is that we schedule that hearing for our March board meeting, which should be in person, uh, that is the plan at this time, and that, um, it would be, um, it would be better to try to do something like this and more advantageous to, uh, everyone involved to have this, uh, to have a hearing in person if that was decision. Uh, our only other decision, our only other option, I should say, is to provide a written decision, uh, which we would need to do within five business days of today, according to our policy. Um, and, uh, I, I guess I would, um, ask the, the board, uh, what's your pleasure on those two choices, or your thoughts?
Mr. Cook, my, my thought on it is that, um, Mr. Goodme has, uh, done the due diligence and, and really vetted this thing out. He has made a decision, and I don't know that there's any, that it, there's any, uh, anything to be gained by us holding another debate or discussion on this. So I would support the decision that Mr. Goodme has made on this, uh, issue, and would not be looking to hold another, uh, meeting specific to it.
So are, are you referring to complaint? So we have, we really have three issues that, uh, I believe would be part of this discussion. One issue would be the original, the complaint that was filed first against a staff member or an administrator, the complaint filed by an administrator, and the appeal filed by an administrator. So is that, is your statement in regards to all three of those?
Yes, my statement is really, because they all tie together in this whole piece, and I, I really was believing that the issue had been resolved, went through the process, and had been resolved, and somehow it, it came to life again. And, um, I, I don't know that there's any benefit in us holding another hearing. So I guess if you're saying, am I combining all three? Yeah, I did, per se.
All right.
Mr. Cook, um, would I like to address the board?
Yes.
I think we have such an unfortunate situation here that I, I do believe that Mr. Goodme's investigation was complete and thorough, but the concern that I have on this is when we have a hearing coming to the board level, one of our duties as a board, or the, what that we're supposed to do is to make sure that the remedies will prevent this situation from reoccurring again. Um, and I'm not sure that we have restored justice here. I, I think we still have a lot of anger and a lot of, you know, on both sides of the coin, that we haven't, you know, come to a good conclusion. I'm not sure that we have to debate all of the things and have all of the investigation done again, but I'm, I'm not sure that we have a, a resolved situation. So in, in that way, I think we should be having a hearing just because I think we need it to bring peace to the community, to the staff, to all involved.
Well, in all due respect, I disagree. I believe that we're prolonging this, we're adding to it. It's now taken on a life of its own, and that we may have legal issues involved in it, and it really, I, my belief is it's beyond the scope of, or the purview of our board.
Mr. Cook, this is Leslie Rosenau. May I speak?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, Mrs. Rosenau.
I have a concern, um, I, I would like to, I would like to have a hearing. I would like to hear from all parties involved. Um, I do understand that, um, there's been, uh, procedure put in place and that, um, our position is- that, um, our position is that this should not happen again. However, I think there are a lot of loose ends and I think we need to tighten up some things, um. I believe number one, first and foremost, that we owe it to our employees to both be heard. Um, I think that's very important. Um, as Nancy stated, there is still a lot of anger and the least we could do is hear them out.
Okay, can you, Mrs. Rosenau?
My name is Amanda Bobstein. Um, I see where Susan's coming from with all this information. I think Mr. Goodme did a good job of going through all of this. He came up with a solution. I am good with the solution, but I would never, if someone ever requests a board meeting, uh, board hearing, I think we should always be able to hear that person out, so, um, I don't know if anyone's ever going to get less angry about this, or hopefully we can come to a resolution, but we should give it an opportunity. But, um, I would never want to turn anybody away who wants to be heard from us, or like wants us to hear them. I would never want to turn anybody away from that situation, so I am for having a hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bobstein.
Mr. Cook, this is Mr. Drewick.
Mr. Cook, this is-
I think, I think Mrs. Drewick got in first and I'll come right to you, Mrs. McHugh.
Um, I'd like to, to agree with, uh, Ms. Thompson, Ms. Bobstein, Mrs. Durst and, and Mrs. Rosenau. Um, this is a very, um, difficult situation. Um, I do see where Mrs. Durst is coming from, Mr. Goodme handled this in the appropriate manner. Um, she did come up with a solution, and at one point in time, we thought this was a closed, um, case, um, only to be enlightened that it was not closed, uh, which now has brought up this dilemma of having a hearing and going forward with one. Um, I do feel that everyone should be heard as well. But my biggest question is, if we already have a resolution to the problem, to the complaint, the hearing basically is for people to voice their concerns and their issues. So if we do go ahead and have this hearing, what are we going to gain from that hearing? Of course, we're going to gain and allow those individuals to speak their mind and give their input, but we've already come to a solution. So, by having this hearing, what more are we going to gain?
Mr. Cook, can I address to that?
Um, sure.
I believe that if the board wants to change the remedy or the solution, add to it, detract from it, that can occur after a hearing, so it is to make a final remedy or solution. Is that the case?
I, Ms. Thompson, I believe you're absolutely correct. Is, um, and, and, and the, the pertinent piece of level four, um, is the sentence, the board's decision will be final on the matter and it will not provide a meeting to other complainants on the same issue. In other words, um, the decision is final and is, and is put behind us.
Okay, so at this point, this is Mrs. Drewick again. The solution that we've come up with right, right now is just a temporary solution per Mr. Goodme's recommendation? Is that my understanding?
Well, it, so, level four involves the board, doesn't, it, 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 it no longer involves the superintendent per se, so. Level three, um, would involve the superintendent's decision and level four would be when, uh, one or more of the parties, um, um, requests in writing a hearing by the board, so, um, it would be, the board would have the ability to keep things as they are, um, or direct things to be changed, or could come up with any decision that the board, uh, would wish to in regards to, um, any complaint. So it would be, uh, up to the members of the board to hear, um, hear the evidence, for lack of a better term, and to render a decision as a group. On any questions.
I think it's a good, I appreciate that.
No problem. Um, uh, Mrs. McHugh?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I kind, I agree with Amanda, um, because a hearing has been requested, I, I really feel that we should honor that, um, and, um, I under, I, I hoped that it would have been solved with the other meetings earlier, but, um, and I, and I understand too, that once the board reaches their decision, whatever it would be, then, then, then it should be finalized and I'm, there's not always going to be a happy answer to it, but at least we can, we can put it behind us when it's done. So I, I, I agree that we should probably have the hearing and then, and then be able to put it behind us with the decision.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. McHugh. Um, I think that is, I think everybody has spoken. Um, I would just share my thoughts. Um, I, I believe that in a situation such as this, it behooves us to, uh, hear the parties and render, uh, a decision as a group and move forward, um, putting this behind us. So, uh, whatever that outcome is, uh, it will be. So at this point, uh, back to really our only two choices of this evening, as we have no more than five business days following this meeting, to advise complainants in writing of our decision. Um, I would entertain a motion, um, um, that motion could eat, it was really one of two things. We may either provide the complainants with written decisions, uh, this evening, or grant a hearing before the board, which we would, um, grant for the March board meeting, and, uh, we would provide the complainants, uh, that decision in writing for more than five business days from today, if that was, uh, the board's choice.
All right, looking for a motion now, Mr. Cook?
Unless somebody else has a comment, that would be great.
I'll make a motion to, um, have the board hearing, um, and the March meeting.
This is Mrs. Drewick and I would second that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Bobstein, supported by Mrs. Drewick, to hold this hearing, um, for the complainants, uh, during the March meeting. Any discussion? Not hearing any discuss, roll call vote?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosenau?
Yes.
Mrs. Drewick?
Yes.
All right, six affirmative, one, one abstention, motion passes. Um, so, we will prepare, um, um, I'd ask please, uh, for Mrs. Heilig to send out, uh, a letter to the complainants therein, that we will be hearing, um, during our March meeting, um, and we will put that, and let's put that towards the end of the meeting, um, so that, uh, folks that, uh, want to hear the regular business, uh, can do that first if they'd like. And, um, we will share, uh, if you could just get that notice out, um, as we get closer to the meeting, uh, I'll work with Mr. Goodme on how that will go, so that we can have an orderly, um, and, um, swift review of the, uh, of the facts and make her, and render decisions on those issues. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, this is Karen Shizik.
Yes.
Should we meet at a, um, should we meet at six, or should we just keep the meeting at seven? I was just questioning that.
Good question, actually. Um, thank you, Mrs. McHugh. Uh, would anyone be opposed to moving to six P.M. for March? Do we need a motion for that? No, okay, good. Cameras are great. All right, so we will, uh, we'll post that meeting for six P.M. I think last time we did that, we got done in an hour and forty-five minutes, so. We'll, uh, we'll hope that happens. Um, all right, so six P.M. for the March meeting. Uh, committee member review, as discussed our last meeting, we've got, um, uh, Mrs. Drewick in, um, on the board, uh, at this time, so. Um, I'm going to ask Mrs. Drewick to join both the Personnel Committee and the Facilities and Grounds Committee, committees. Um, um, if, uh, that, um, would be great, and then, um, I think I left this off when we did these originally, but, um, please add, um, my name to the Finance Committee with Ms. Thompson and Ms. McHugh, if you would, whoever's typing that, I guess that must be Mr. Goodme. And I believe that that is, that fills out our board committees through the end of this year. I know the sinking fund, I know there's some, um, there's an update from the sinking fund, I believe that, um, that, um, Mr. Goodme will share tonight. Any questions, um, or anything on the board committees for tonight?
Well, Mr. Cook, if they need an additional person on the, as a DSIT representative, in case one of those people could not make it, um, I would not mind just being an alternate if someone, you know, can't go or, or can't go to one of those meetings.
Fair enough. I think, I, I think, uh, you were on there before you even stopped talking. There you are.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you for that, and we will move on to co-op football program with Landmark Academy. Uh, I believe we talked about this very late last year, and so we're nice and early this year. Um, I believe that, uh, by March something or other, uh, which would be before our next scheduled meeting, we have to approve this, and this is an opportunity for, um, students from Landmark Academy who don't have, uh, that school does not have enough people to, uh, field a football team, um, for them to join us and play football, giving us, um, um, some more athletes, uh, on our football team, and, um, with a school, um, not far from here, who, um, is very friendly with us. Um, Carol, can you have, anything else you want to share with that?
Uh, no, I think you handled it pretty well, Mr. Cook. I mean, it's a great opportunity for not, for not only us, but for Landmark, you know, our neighboring school district. They used to be a part of a co-op with Cardinal Moody High School for football, and they averaged about nine kids going there to play. We were in a co-op with Austin several years ago, and unfortunately, I think the travel was just too far. We never got any, you know, we never got any, uh, athletes to come up here, but in meeting with Landmark last year, they were very interested in doing it. At that time, they had nine or ten, uh, soccer players, and I think six or seven wanted to play for us. We would have most likely had it in place for this year, but you're right, the COVID thing that hit in March shut it down. We had no, we couldn't get it completed in time, so. I think it's a great opportunity for us, uh, I think it's a great opportunity for them. It unites two neighboring districts that are pretty close. I mean, they're, uh, their enrollment is very similar to ours. They're in our district for, for other sports. And, um, it just, like you said, gives them an opportunity and, uh, the playing is close and, and as far as travel, so, um, the interest is there. Uh, Coach Stumpf and I have met with the athletic director over at Landmark already, and we're looking to go over there once the COVID thing settles a little bit, and we're going to start promoting and get, trying to get some of their kids to come over. Uh, we played them in basketball at the beginning of the year, and I think they had eleven players and seven or eight of them said, yeah, we're playing, so. A great opportunity for both schools, you know?
Do you need a, um, Ms. Rock, is there a form we need to fill out, or do you just need it to-
There is, and I apologize. I actually thought I had put it on. It, it's a form that I'll have to send to that, uh, Mr. Crapp, uh, and then Mr. Goodme, as well as you, as, uh, school board president, will have to sign. And, um, similar to Landmark's is, uh, already had theirs approved, so, um, yeah, there will be a form that'll have to be signed, and that, for, it has to be done by the end of March. I just didn't run away until the last minute, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Okiad. Uh, any questions about this? What comments?
I'd just like to add that I think it's a really, uh, I think it'll, I'm hoping it'll be a really positive experience. I, I think that, uh, combining the two schools will obviously give us some more players and, uh, hopefully lead us in the right direction.
Well, Ms. Rosenau, I couldn't agree with you more. I will tell you that the, the, the unique thing about it is because of the enrollment, you know, if we're, if we're fortunate enough to make the playoffs, um, it won't hurt us as far as moving too far up in the class or anything like that, so we'd be very comparable in the talent that we're already playing in our existing schedule, and, um, yeah, I mean, the excitement, eh, last year that was caused by football was, was very positive, and, you know, the athletic department, and, you know, setting out the different things that we've been setting out with the Sting Report and the Hive, these other school districts are seeing that, and, uh, we were definitely leading them in that regard, so. Um, it's an exciting time for all the sports, but we're, we're really excited for football, because you're right, Ms. Rosenau, I think it's a, a very good opportunity to turn the corner and, and show some, uh, significant progress. Coach Stumpf has done a great job in the little bit of time that we've had, as far as getting kids into the weight room. He's working with both basketball programs. He's willing to work with anything. Youth camps this summer, I mean, once this COVID thing is up, you know, I think you're going to find a, a, a football program that'll be leading by example, that many other programs will want to follow, so. We're very excited.
Mr. Cook, I have a question. Is there any cost to us, or does Landmark help in the cost of equipment, insurance, um, and the, the different things, since football is such an expensive sport?
Uh, you're asking me to use our equipment. So our helmets, I will tell you that we've got a total transformation of our helmet, um, repertoire in the last three, four years. We have, uh, you know, some of the best helmets that money can buy at this time. Fortunately, with life expectancy, we have enough equipment at this time, uh, as far as shoulder pads and all that stuff that comes with it. We also have enough uniforms, so. Any and all expense would fall on Memphis. But there's, I, I, I don't know of any ex, excessive, uh, expend, expenditure that we would, that we would encounter.
I hope that answers you.
Goodness, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
May I ask a follow-up to that, uh, Mr. Oki, or Mr. Cook?
Go ahead.
So I'm a little unfamiliar with the, the pay-to-play, just because, um, I don't have, I, I don't, I, my kids are just their first year of middle school, so, um, if our students have to pay to participate in football, are, are, am I understanding this correctly, that Landmark will not have to pay to participate with our football team?
No, they will have to, you know, they'll have to follow anything that we have already set in, in motion. What I mean by no further expenditures, I mean, we already think they're boss, we already have helmets, we already have shoulder pads, any, any, see what I mean, and uniforms, stuff like that, so.
Okay.
They would be expected to pay, pay to play, pay to participate, I mean, use the proper word, um, you know, just like any, any Memphis athlete.
Okay, yep, I just needed clarification, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cook, can I add a, ask a question to Mrs. Drewick regarding this?
Sure.
Um, Mr. Oki, just a question about this. What about- Um, Mr. Oki, just a question about this, what about transportation to and from? Now, would Memphis pick up those individuals at Landmark, or would they be responsible to drop their student off at Landmark for waiting?
Their responsibility is just like on Memphis athletes, to and from their Memphis facilities, so their parents, their owner, yep.
All right, and, and.
You need a motion?
I, I, I would appreciate it.
Okay, I'd love to make a motion that we accept the co-op football program with Landmark Academy for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year, um, and see how this works, I think it's a great opportunity. Support.
Motion by Mrs. Thompson, supported by Mrs. Bobstein, I do believe. Any further discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosenoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Drewick?
Yes.
Okay, I believe that's seven, zero, yes. Well, um, if Ms. Oki can get that document to, um, Mr. Krapp or Mr. Goodme, we'll get that signed and get that done. Okay. Football this fall. Um, okay, so item app building issue, so I sent a picture and a description out earlier, and, and, um, I, this is just a discussion point, and, and I, I don't know that a motion would be necessary here, but, or maybe it would be, but I, I just wanted to share this with the board, this was shared with me, or with me by a parent, um, over the weekend, and, uh, it, it's obviously open and obvious that it's, it's something that can't happen. Um, that being said, I, I'm not, um, personally looking to beat a dead horse this evening, but what I would like to understand, um, and not necessarily tonight, right now, but a- as I thought about the potential, um, that, that, that shows, um, I, I would like to have a, um, a somewhat rooted branch, um, white paper of how this happened, um, and, um, when it happened, how it happened, and what procedures do we have within our buildings to make sure that nothing like that, um, happens again, and that nothing like that is taking place, uh, anywhere in any of our buildings right now? Um, and so, I, I, I guess the, um, if there was a motion to be made, it would be to understand, um, those things that I just described, right, and, and I'm not, you know, personally, I'm not looking for a pound of flesh here, I'm looking to understand what went wrong here, and, and as everyone, uh, involved is, is responsible, including myself, I take that responsibility myself. Um, so I, I know that's, um, and then I apologize just getting that to you today, um, I meant to send it last night, and things got away from me, but, um, I guess, Mr. Goodme, is that, um, is a, is a written report about this issue and those things that, that, that I've asked about it, something that, um, you can, um, lead or captain or see that that happens?
Absolutely, no motion is needed, we will take care of it and get it to you as soon as possible.
Okay.
Mr. Goodme?
Yep.
It's concerning to me that nobody knows how long that's even been like that, do you guys have a pro- a policy or procedure and process right now of locking the building to make sure everything is secure, safe?
I can't answer that, uh, typically the doors are checked, there's a gym door that, you know, if you peek in the gym, you're not gonna see it, um, as it has been, so I, I would say that no, that door is not being checked every night, um, I know that a procedure that I will be talking about is that every door is checked, and that is, nothing is blocked, and that, uh, we do not have this issue ever again, so, I apologize for occurring, and it will, uh, be addressed immediately, and it has been.
All right, thank you.
This is Mrs. Drewick, I just have a question regarding this matter, um, Mr. Cook, what was this discovered? Just to clarify?
Uh, it was sent to me Sunday, um, morning, and, um, I, I, so, n- n- normally, um, well, I sent it immediately, or as soon as I got back from church, to, um, Mr. Goodme, so that it would be taken care of immediately before any kids were back in the school, so, um, i- it, because, uh, anything that involves safety, um, I, I would tell you that I would throw away any policy that says who you're supposed to go to, and I would go to whoever's gonna fix it if it's a safety issue, so, um, I think we all have a reason for that, so, uh, how, how long it has been in that, in that matter, I, I, I can't answer that question, that's why I've asked Mr. Goodme to, uh, to, to quizz white paper on the issue, it's concerning.
Did you know that, that picture was taken, though?
Um, I was told the picture was taken somewhere in the last two weeks, but it was, I understand it was still that way until yesterday, until it was taken care of yesterday evening.
We just make a plea out there that if somebody sees a safety concern, that, I mean, I'm glad that they addressed it with you, Mr. Cook, but we shouldn't be waiting, like, if you see something, a potential safety hazard, like, they need to be reporting this right away to our building administrator, Kratt, like, this shouldn't be where it has to come to a board meeting before something's done with it, so, like, these are, are safety as their, as their children, and it should really be like a community effort, so if anyone sees something, even if I'm in town and I see a toddler, you know, it's like, you're gonna do something then, you're not gonna say, hey, by the way, last week your kid was out running in the road, like, this is something where everyone needs to be kinda hands-on, and I get that it shouldn't happen, and we, Mr. Goodme, I trust that you'll take care of that, but from here on out, like, these issues that come up need to be handled and addressed right away, not kinda like, here's a picture sometime last two weeks, like, I'm appreciative of the person bringing it to our attention, but this is just something that needs to be brought up to the building administrator, to Kratt, like, this stuff needs to be handled right away.
Yeah, absolutely, that's.
Where, where the room taken down? Mr. Goodme, is this the elementary, middle doors?
Yes, it is.
And both of those doors exit go out, correct?
Yes.
So there is, they are not barring the exit from the building here, correct?
Well, the way they did that, they would have on one of the doors, yes.
And, but kids still could have got, I mean, there's no excuse for this, don't get me wrong, I'm just saying that it, it looks, these are doors that go out, so, a, a person could have exited this gym even with that there, correct?
The, as far as I can tell from the picture, they would have been able to exit the right door of the double doors.
Okay.
So.
I mean, that's, it shouldn't be, no, I'm totally wrong, yeah, thank you.
When you say into the elementary double doors, what, what, what exactly does that mean? What, can you share with me what room this was in?
It's in the gymnasium, it's in the gymnasium, it would be the two doors between the bleachers on the east side. And one door is the one that kept flying open all the time, and I don't know if it was fixed, and that might be why it was done.
Okay, oh, okay.
Yeah, in, in, indeed, and, and, and just so the board's clear, um, I, I received that just after church yesterday and shared it with Mr. Goodme immediately, and it was taken care of immediately, so we, we certainly didn't hold on to it, um, it was, uh, as soon as it was brought to my attention, I brought it to his, and it was taken care of, so it was not, uh, nobody sat on it. Um, I, I agree with you, Mrs. Bobstein, um, but, uh, we can only, in, in this case, can only react on what we, uh, knew right away. Okay, anything else on that, we'll move to G. Okay, so, uh, so pay-to-play, I know there's been, um, a, a ton of information shared, um, on social media, too, several board members were tagged in, in a post, uh, about K-PAC's decision, um, on pay-to-play, uh, for those that have not seen it, um, the K-PAC School Board suspended all pay-to-play for this year, this school year, and have, uh, or have said that they will refund money to people that have already paid, um, so it is certainly a, a, a conversation that, uh, I'm sure some members of the board were asked about, and so, uh, I thought it would be, uh, probably a good idea to put it on our agenda and have any discussion related to that that anyone would like to have? If any.
I do have a question, where, what does our pay-to-play, what does that money gor- go towards?
Uh, it's deposited right into a general fund, so it would just go to basically, our pay-to-play, if, if you guys can see the screen I'm sharing right now, you'll see that just a winter sports analysis, let me see if I can blow it up here a little bit for you, um.
While you're bringing that up, Mr. Goodme, did you guys, I know you said that you guys kind of, um, kinda lowered the price of the pay-to-play, did you guys do that for the fall season, too?
Um, the fall season, if I remember correctly, Mr. Oki, may I could help you out, I don't believe we collected pay-to-play in the fall season.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, you're correct, Mr. Goodme.
I'm sorry, well, now allow me to enlarge this, uh.
Seventy-five, uh, seventy-four hundred dollars.
Basically, winter sports will collect seventy-four hundred dollars out of a seventy-thousand-dollar season, so when we collect pay-to-participate, it goes into the general fund to help with the cost of athletics, but it by no means covers the cost. Um, pay-to-play, again, seventy, you know, seventy-four hundred dollars is, is a nice amount, um, you know, if it was two to three thousand, I could see where it might not be, uh, you know, something that, it's a huge issue, um, this is with the prorated costs, we, uh, reduced costs for junior high sports because of reduced schedules, and, um, high school wrestling because of reduced schedule, but our, our girls JV, I'm sorry, boys JV and varsity basketball and girls varsity basketball are playing eighteen, nineteen games out of a typical twenty, so they have a full season, um, so we did not look at reducing those. Um, cheer, we, they have a full season, um, they are doing some sideline stuff, which they not, did not always do, so they're getting in the event that, uh, you know, that they may have missed out of competition, but they're doing some sideline stuff, um, again, it, it's a great, great thing what K-PAC is doing, by no means do I say that it's, uh, you know, not the best thing in the world, but again, it's, it's up to the board to make that decision, it's, um, it's right there in twenty, you know, kind of the cost, what it brings in, um, and, uh, thank you to Adam for putting this together on short notice earlier today.
Okay. Like I stated before, I think, um, even these reduced rates, um, like, we had to have a team just quarantine and stuff, and they missed the meets, and now they're doing like map catch-up, so, if they can even fit the meets in, so I just think what K-PAC did is a great idea, honestly, I'd never even thought, it didn't cross my brain, but I think it's a great idea, um, I think no seasons are guaranteed, no games are guaranteed with COVID, we, it's great that the county's down, we don't know how long that's gonna be for, it can spike back up, so, I just think going forward, I don't think it's a bad idea, especially if we didn't collect for the fall, is to let this season go, and another thing is, I, you know, I don't know if this is a situation, but possibly could be, is that parents not wanting their kids to play sports this year, because you don't know for sure if you're, they're even gonna get, why are they gonna pay for something that's not even guaranteed? So I think, like, I don't want to have kids not be able to participate if that's a situation also, just because the parents don't wanna pay for something that they don't know they're gonna be able to participate in ultimately, but that's just my opinion, but, um, that's where I'm at with it.
Mr. Goodme, answer. Is this gonna? Okay, go.
Go ahead, Nancy, sorry.
You do it.
I just want to respond to Amanda, the one thing, uh, we have never had, uh, and I don't believe we had any that are not participating because of the cost, we always have scholarship money available to students that have a hardship, and nobody's, uh, uh, come to us and said, hey, is there gonna be a season, is there not, you know, if they're even questioning it, we've always supported that, so, um, that shouldn't be a concern, but I, I agree with some of the other commentators.
Mrs. Thompson, go ahead.
Okay, part of my question is that anybody that qualifies for free and reduced lunch, are they still free athletically?
We do help out them any way they need, yeah.
And then, is this a amount to be collected if all teams are full, or is this per the number of students that we have signed up to play right now?
The, that is with the prorated amount and the current number of athletes participating.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Drewick, go ahead.
Um, I, I just wanted to follow up on the fall sports, um, to my understanding, we did pay for the play for fall sports, am I misunderstanding that, Mr. Oki?
You know, I can't lie to you, Mr. Drew, you've got me trying to rack my brains, it's so much going on, I.
Volleyball, but we had a full season, and I was just, you know, wanting to point out, you know, that, you know, I agree with everyone, you know, in this matter, you know, and they, we had a fall court, there was a pay-to-play, we had a full season, as long as there was not a financial hardship on anyone, um, I definitely think that it would be a great idea to possibly reduce the cost or eliminate the cost, um, moving forward, especially for the financial hardships, um, but again, back in the fall, I do believe there was the full amount of pay-to-play paid.
Yes, then I apologize for that, Adam looked into it for us, and it was collected for fall sports.
All right, thank you, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Um, additionally, this is Susan, uh, parents can also volunteer to sell tickets at the gate or different things, and I understand that this has all changed because of COVID, because number one, the biggest moneymaker was the concession stand, which obviously is not up and running, but there were, there were opportunities for either parent or both parents to, uh, participate in order to help supplement their children playing sports, so there was a way to, to make sure that everyone got to play.
Susan, you bring up a good point, too, uh, that was something brought up to me early on in the fall about, um, gate money helping out maybe the athletic, uh, boosters, because they lost all revenue with not having concessions, so that is something the board could consider if we did continue collecting with fall, I'm sorry, with winter pay-to-participate, uh, partial or all of it could go to the athletic boosters, if that is something the board wanted to entertain.
Okay. Anybody else have comments or thoughts on this subject?
I just have a question, um, as I stated earlier, I'm not a hundred percent familiar with pay-to-participate, so I, um, it is for junior high, high school students to be involved in a sport, it's just the cost to play the sport, and to participate on the team and whatnot, correct?
Correct.
Can I bounce off that from Mr. Rosenoff a little bit? Um, it kind of bounced off what Mr. Goodme stated earlier, too, and I think Mrs. Durst, um, it, the pay-to-play, too, Mrs. Rosenoff, in the past, also the incentive for parents to volunteer to get that credit, so they don't have to pay the full amount, and it, it's very difficult getting volunteers for these sporting events, selling concessions, things like that, um, so it's partially an incentive as well, um, for parents to volunteer to get that cost reduced, um, to let them pay the full amount.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, you may not be aware of that, without having students in court yet, so.
That's a good point, Mrs. Drewick, and you know, uh, personally, I think the, a- a- as I looked at it, and, and, and credit to K-PAC, I think that was a good decision for them, um, I think my one fear would be if you eliminate, uh, pay-to-participate, I, I'd like to think this wouldn't happen, but would we have less volunteers, um, and we don't have as many as we need now, um, I, I will tell you, I, I did not think of what Mr. Goodme just said, but a very interesting thought about perhaps taking a portion of, do we know what our pay-to-play is for the year? This is great that we got this for the winter sports, and I'm not putting, I don't, Mr. Walsh, I'm not putting you on the spot here, but if you had the back of the napkin map, what we, what we got for fall and what we would get for spring, what's the total amount of pay-to-participate you think we have for a school year? what's the total amount of pay to participate you think we have for a school year? Just round figures.
About twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, okay. So you know, it would be, what Mr. Goodme brought up would be interesting. Do we, do we, do we take a portion of that? Do we keep pay to participate along with, and certainly always making sure that folks that can't afford it are taken care of based on, on need? And you know, maybe, maybe we do do something for the boosters with some of that money. That's, it's an interesting idea. So you know, we don't have a motion on the floor. We don't have to have a motion on the floor. This was, I think it's important that when enough of our, of our parents and constituents ask the question, that we at least talk about it. It certainly entertain a motion if somebody wanted to make one or we can move on in the agenda.
If I could say a couple of things, Mr. Cook. Mr. Area, what you're saying, I mean, the game, the game health is extremely important. I mean, we keep saying boosters and we keep saying concession stand, which is, I mean, and the football concession stand is, especially at homecoming, can be overbearing. But you know, the clock, the scorekeepers, the announcers, the chain game in football, and these are all things that, you know, people can do. And I will be honest with you that the great thing is we have a great support staff, but it's usually the same people. And a lot of them are getting older and graduating, and a lot of them have so much credit built up. A few of the people that questioned me about pay to participate this last couple of weeks, I'll be honest with you, they probably have enough to pay for half the school because they have so much built up with all the stuff that they do. So you know, I, it was still, that's what tells you, isn't it a fair question? Because like I said, they have enough credit built up. And I know Mr. Goodme met with the board, a booster just last, I believe that, oh, Mr. Goodme, or last summer, and they raised, you know, what we, they would give for somebody working these events. So you know, we're struggling to run a first-class operation, to have our announcer there, to, you know, these kids can hear it, a professional score clock person. It's very important for varsity, for all of them, but especially for varsity. But we're scrambling to try to get people to do these things when they can help, you know, and, and, and reduce their costs. I will tell you that we have never kept anybody from playing. We just, we do pursue that we have an agreement if they cannot pay, whether like Mr. Goodme said, we have a scholarship to offer them or some other person who may have credits built up that doesn't use them or doesn't need them anymore, or like a weekly payment plan. So I think we're very creative in what we do to assist the families and the kids so that we don't ever leave, leave anybody behind for not being able to play. So I just wanted to share that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Any further discussion or anyone have anything that they'd like to do with this today? Okay. We will move on to superintendent's comments then. Mr. Goodme.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I mentioned in one of my Friday finals that the sinking fund committee had begun meeting and getting together. We found two meetings. First one, we took some, a look at all the, the different suggestions that our staff had offered up for sinking fund ideas. We tried to break those into different qualifying areas. Obviously, sinking fund dollars do not cover everything. You cannot buy equipment. You cannot do a yearly maintenance thing with sinking funds. So we took those and we divided them into three categories. And obviously with the, the two that you see on the right, the maintenance team and other, those are things that we will still look at doing, but it would not qualify as sinking fund dollars. And we broke that down. We took all the different ideas for the sinking funds and we tried to start narrowing those down into our, our top priority list based on the group and kind of based on safety. That's one, one of our huge focuses, the safety of, of our buildings and our districts. Because obviously with the last sinking fund, it was a, a big part of it, you know, with the new lighting and with the buzzer entryways and the best of bill at the junior, senior high school, the gym floor, different things like that that we did that improved our safety. A couple of things here, you can see that our priorities kind of narrowed down into about five or six areas. And of course, they're always the high areas, the high cost areas. We do have a few quotes coming in and I've shared some of that, but a big push, it's parking lots. That was part of our original sinking fund to repair parking lots. As the former board decided five years ago, they outweighed the complete redo of the parking lot and did some repair work for the new boiler at the elementary school, which took a huge portion of that because of the need over there. Doing the parking lot right now, the original quote was about three hundred and sixty-six thousand. The price of asphalt has gone down and we have a new quote coming in, so it will be a little bit less than that if we do it all at once. All the equipment is here. They do the front of the high school, the student parking lot, central office and the, behind the high school. So that would be there as well. Another big project that is in need and that we addressed partially is the high school, junior, senior high school roof. That roof is a rubber roof with stone. Unfortunately, they don't put stone on there anymore and what stone does is causes tears in the, the rubber roof. It does protect it from sun and weather, but it has its own problems. So that roof now is on year twenty, which is about typical for a rubber roof. Complete repair is estimated about five dollars a square foot, coming in at about four hundred and twenty thousand. There is a reduced cost if we choose to do the entire amount. Like Mr. Kujia said earlier, they have to come out and assess it. But that would include removing all the rocks and redoing all of it. There is a newer section on that building, about two thousand eight, two thousand ten, when we added the four additional classrooms on that building. So that area may not, it does not have the stone on it and it does not have high traffic on it, so it may not be needed to repair. So that number should be less. One big safety feature that has been on many conversations is doing a keyed entryway or a pass card entryway for five or six entries at each building. That's what eliminates the excess number of keys that are out there. It'd help us secure the buildings and obviously it would make it a lot easier for our staff to get in. With that system, when a employee comes in, you scan your card, it opens the door and it registers who's coming in the building at what time. It would allow them to disarm the building without a principal or a custodian being in there. So it'd be very beneficial with that. Another big push from the elementary is the bathroom. The sinks are in bad shape. They don't spray very consistently and the soap dispenser is spray all over. Those are some things that we're looking at. A nice thing with that is we think we can do those projects for a pretty reasonable amount and it's something that I think we can get done. A big one over there is elementary heaters and that is just very obvious at this time. Those heaters are ancient. I think Mr. Kujia told it, that's when he said, when he looked for the motors on there now, they're antiques. So finding parts for them is very difficult. We have had an estimate of replacing the entire unit in the classroom of about five thousand dollar per unit, but we're struggling to find a company that wants to come in and address all the piping issues that would go along with it because of the age and the corrosion and rust that goes along with it. So we're continuing to move forward with that. This was kind of an exciting, fun patio idea that was presented by the group, talking about behind the junior, senior high school. It's an area that's used by the junior, senior high school students for lunch. Also, it's access to our, our band and our robotics rooms. So currently, this is a grassy area, the, all that area under the blue roof that you see there. We would put cement in all of that area, which would give us access during the winter months when the robotics team is going on, that they can get their equipment out without trudging through the mud. Also, with marching band in the fall when it's raining and getting cold, it'd be a nice area where they could possibly warm up, practice and get their equipment out. On the extension, it shows kind of that horseshoe there. Not sure that we can make that happen because there's a lot of drainage, things we would have to address before we looked at that. But it is feasible that we could bring it out at least to the edge of the sidewalk and give it some nice area for our students and band and robotics. So I, I thought that was a really nice idea presented. The concrete woods added in the cost of the asphalt because it would be the same company and they already have their equipment here. So it was a very reasonable price at that time. The roof part would have to be engineered and that's where we might get into some higher costs. So there's no pricing on that as of yet. We have some, I, I did share this folder with everybody. So you guys can go through it. I know I'm running through it kind of quick. But Mr. Ush was kind of, already volunteered to create a video of all the projects we've completed over the last five years with our current sinking fund. So he's working on putting that together as well as creating another video too, to look at some of the project areas that we're looking to do to help us present this to our community and our, our taxpayers to get support. I know we talk a lot about the sinking fund. It's, it's something we really look forward to, but the, the bigger issue on the May fourth ballot is the operating millage. This is something that we have to renew every five to 10 years, depending on what we went for the last time. The operating millage is on all non-homesteaded taxable parcels in our community. So a homeowner, if you're homesteaded in your home, this does not pertain to them. However, it's an eighteen mil tax that's collected yearly that the state does not reimburse if you do not get it. So basically for us, the eighteen mil is about one point four five million dollars. So if the non-homestead or the operating millage did not pass, the district would not receive one point four five million dollars in our state funding. So it's very important. It's about sixteen percent of our total income each year. We have had great success with this in our community. Everybody understands and supports it, but that is something that we must make sure that we are going out and talking about, explaining that it is non-homestead parcels and how very important it is to the success of Memphis Community Schools. I'm sure everybody can imagine what would happen if not getting that passed. So that would be another one that's on the May fourth ballot. These have the, the language in there. I'll obviously clean it up before we get out. The one thing we are waiting to hear from St. Clair County is what precincts will be open for polling. This is something we've had some struggles with in the past, getting Riley and Wales and Memphis and our different precincts open. I did contact all of them to see if they would be willing to. I heard back from Riley, that Riley would be willing to stay open and for polling on May fourth. I have not heard from Memphis or Wales and those are the two other ones that we really kind of need them to be open, make sure that our, our community members are able to get to the polls easily. Flyer, this is the flyer we used last time. Mrs. Hankins is redoing it. We were sending out for print and should have that here in the next two to three weeks. Meeting agendas in there. We meet again this Wednesday, just to kind of review where we at. We'll come up, what the next part is, is I've asked the members of our committee to bring some recommendations for a pride committee. The Memphis Pride Committee is kind of a group that helps us get the word out to our community. It's the people that are in our community that aren't Memphis employees that can really help us spread the word. And that to me was the main reason that we were able to pass the sinking fund last time. It did take us three tries at the sinking fund. The home, non-homestead operating millage passed on the first try, but it took us a little longer with the sinking fund. I think now we, we've shown what we've done with this past sinking fund. I had shared with the committee two weeks ago that after our next collection, which is in July, and after all the payments and projects, we should have over a hundred thousand left in our current sinking fund that we can use for the projects. That includes putting another fifty thousand towards our technology for twenty-one, 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 twenty-two school year and paying off the last portion of the project from the original sinking one five years ago. So we've done a really good job with all the projects we've completed. I did put that in the one agenda here, talked about all of our projects completed, which when we started lifting them off, and I, I should have made it a little bigger here, but if you get a chance.
We still see the patio diagram on there. We're not seeing what you're sharing.
Thank you. The completed projects and additional projects that we're able to do, it's here in the, for you guys to take a look at. But it's, it's really amazing that we got so much done with a one mil sinking fund, you know, for five years and we still have, like I said, about a hundred thousand dollars to do some other projects with it. So very excited with that and, you know, everything that we can plan for an additional sinking fund. Any questions on that before I move on?
Mr. Goodme, I want to thank you for explaining why the parking lot didn't get done because of the boiler with the last sinking fund. I know that's going to be a big hurdle to get this sinking fund approved is explaining why that was not done because that is, you know, my only concern was the parking lot being redone. Now, does this address like the drainage of the area, holding water and everything like that?
So the, we addressed the drains and the potholes. That was the one thing that we were able to do with the past sinking fund. So the two drains in the back and the two main drains in the front of the junior, senior high were all torn out. They were razed and reconcreted and I'm sure you guys have seen those as you drive around. So that addressed a big part of it. There's one area of drainage that's a concern, which is at the central office parking lot. And when they come in with that, they will trench and re-ditch that area. So it no longer sits there.
That's the area I was thinking of.
Yeah. You know, the one other area that we have problems with is more of the city issue is where the parking lot come into the road and we have some standing water there. But we talked a little bit about some trenching we can do to help alleviate that as well. So it will address that issue.
You're talking about the area where they cross from the central office to the elementary? Yeah.
Yeah. And when you enter the main driveway to junior, senior high, you know, the, the further west entrance. But yeah, it would, it would address those. And like you said, you know, when, when the, the board five years ago made the determination of what, what priorities they needed, they, they told, the security was the huge thing. And no, they, having a boiler that was new and you had two, they were fifty plus years old, that became a priority. The secured entrance ways, you know, the redoing, the best of bill at the junior, senior high. So you're, you're right. Getting that information out, I, I think is very important. But at the same time, we were able to do some, some work to them that made them tolerable like that for the time being. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, my other question is the new key systems with the cards. I think that's a great idea. Who's going to be keeping track? Because I know like the regular employees, I'm sure, is it going to be their badge? Their ID badge that's going to get them in and out?
I don't know exactly how that system would work. The company would issue so many of those cards, you know, because it's not just the same as a barcode. It has to have, you know, the chip inside of it. But it's something that will be handled through central office. So we have a list of, here's who got a card. The nice thing with those, you can deactivate the card.
Okay, so that's exactly where I was going with that.
Instead of hunting me down, you know, to, to get my card back, if we go into the program, it's a deactivation. They no longer have clearance to get in. Or if a, maybe a teacher no longer coaches or something, they might lose access to the area. So this is something that we thought would be very beneficial.
Basically, they're like the hospital systems, back in and out and stuff. Yeah. Okay. That's my only concern is getting the collection of cards and stuff like that, keeping track of that there's somebody there to do that. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Goodme, I have one question for you. Have you contacted, Mr. DeBauer usually is the one that contacts the clerks at the townships and some of the clerks haven't heard from him.
I was on a phone call with Mr. Jay DeBoer the last, gosh, sorry to have to remind me, maybe last Monday or Tuesday. Well, actually it might have been a week before that because we had days off last week. But yes, Jay was still waiting to hear back. He has been reached, has reached out to them to confirm whether or not these, the different areas are going to be in. I sent an email to Wales, Riley and Memphis and Columbus, trying to get, you know, let them know how important it is for them to be open for polling on those days. So I haven't heard from Mr. DeBauer, I said.
I was going to say, because I know Columbus, they, they've already approved them for some other districts, but they hadn't heard from, or got the letters that they needed to sign from Memphis. So there, there might be a little communication gap not happening because they haven't received the letter to sign that says that they would, would do it. And I believe that's at Columbus and at Wales.
I will contact him again.
You might want to because I just don't think what he said is happening has made it all the way around.
Okay. No problem.
Mr. Goodme, this is Mrs. Jerk. May I ask you a question back to the, basically the plumbing issue at the school as well? I had just, actually just heard a recent concern, and I should have mentioned this earlier, something about the lunchroom in the elementary school plumbing being backed up to the point where the smell was so foul for days that many of the kids were getting ill and eating with their masks back on, chewing with their masks on because it could not. could not stand the smell, but yet it was coming from the kitchen and the lunches and everything, and the cooks were still in there cooking under those circumstances. Do we know that situation in, um, I've heard this from numerous parents just, just recently, and I should have mentioned this earlier, like I said, and I apologize, but do we know that then, what that concern was, that it's been fixed, um, or if that has to be, you know, the plumbing issue in the school as well?
So my understanding, that was the grease trap or the trap at the elementary, uh, kitchen. Um, it's something that's supposed to be cleaned on a yearly basis, and, uh, it did not look like it had been addressed in twelve years. Um, so we had a company come in and have to sneak it, they had to break tile, I guess when that floor was re-tiled, when we did some renovations over there, they tiled over that area. Uh, not exactly sure why, um, and I think Mr. Kujat's still on to correct me if I'm wrong, but we did have somebody in to clean it all out, to address it, and then it'll be on that yearly cycle when we do the other traps at the, uh, junior senior high, so.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna branch off that, and this is something I'm sure we'll talk about with being on the different committees here. Um, one of the board members had mentioned, um, earlier about being more proactive than reactive, about, okay, we know that a roof lasts an average ten years per se, so why don't we start to put this in the future budget, instead of reacting when we start to have the roof falling apart and leaking? Same with the, you know, the parking lots or the plumbing, we know the average lifespan of these, these, um, uh, areas of the building, why don't we start to pre-plan and plan ahead instead of being reactive after we already have a problem? And this was mentioned by a board member earlier, and I just wanted to bring it up so that way it did not get, um, missed tonight.
Oh, it's, it won't be missed, uh, that's something we've, we've taken very seriously, and we're, we've got a facility management plan started by Mr. Kujat that does address that, and, and puts a schedule together for all those and addressing all those issues. Um, it was something that was not practiced well, uh, you know, over the past, and it's something that now we, we are looking at to make sure that we don't fall behind the same way.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sure. I just have a few more things, if that's, or if there's no more questions on the thinking fund? Um, a big shout out to all of our staff, uh, Mr. Kujat and his staff, they have been just pounded with all the snow lately, um, assaulting getting here, and the timing of the snow has not been good, it's, it's the middle of the night, so they're here at three in the morning to plow. Uh, they have done a fantastic job getting our lots and our sidewalks ready for our, our staff and students, so thank you to them, um, to Matt and Susan and all their staff. The district is still responsible for all tracing of all positive COVID, um, reports, and it becomes a very time-consuming project. Um, we were getting calls on Fridays and Saturdays, and we're trying to contact families to find out, is there contact outside of school, what are their students, are they around, besides their classes, their bus, the cafeteria, any athletic or extracurriculars on, so Matt and Susan have done a fantastic job, um, taking care of that and getting all the information to our families and to the health department, so thank you to them. Um, MEA, I just wanted to let you guys know, and I think I put in Friday final, I'm not with MEA on calendar for twenty-one, twenty-two, we got, uh, I'd say about ninety percent of it complete. I'm meeting with, uh, the admin team on Wednesday this week to finalize our end of it and re-present, uh, we'll have that, uh, to the board for the March meeting to get approval. Um, we looked really good on that, and, uh, that's all I have. Uh, Mr. Cook, the one thing I did wanna bring up, policy committee, I think we have a few policies out there that, uh, probably need some revisions, and I would like permission, if that's okay with you, to, uh, get ahold of the policy committee and set a date to address those.
Yes, please do. Let me know when it is, cause I, I think there's a two or three that I have written down as well, that we should probably look at, they might be the same or they might be different.
Absolutely, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Cook, on that note, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we have a, um, maybe in central office, do we have an actual binder that has all the policies printed out, or are they only online?
Um, unless Laura is printing one, cause I know she's a paper person as well, I think they are all online.
Okay. Would it, um, i- if at any point, I would, um, I would love for someone to help me out with a list of, um, maybe the more frequently used policies, so I can print them out and have a copy of for myself at home. Um, just working off my laptop, sometimes it's hard to scroll and read through the screen, and like to be able to kinda look at more than one or two pages at a time, so I, I am like Laura, I do like paper. But, uh, if someone could help me come up with a, a list of the more commonly used or referred back to policies-
Oh, yeah.
-that I'm on the policy committee, I think it'd be helpful for me.
And I'll work with Laura and see what we can do, but, I, I couldn't even guess what how many pages, but we'll look and see what-
Oh, yeah.
-may be to present.
It's a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Okay.
And, uh, Mrs. Rosenau, the bylaws are all in your blue book, so if that's helpful, that whole section is printed?
I know, I did see that, it, it's the rest of, uh, it's not the bylaws, it's everything else. Thank you.
Excellent, it's a good question. Just remember that when you refer to one, when you wanna get serious about one, make sure you check online, cause, I mean, you would be involved in any change of a bylaw, but, you know, uh, if we change something, it'll only change online, so, but that's-
Yes, correct, unless I reprint it at that point, yep.
Anything else from Mr. Goodme tonight?
No, sir, that is it.
Uh, Mr. Cook, I do have something for Mr. Goodme, and I'm just gonna wait till roundtable, but I might as well say it now. Um, Mr. Oki referred to the fatheads that we currently have, uh, in the gym, and everyone knows what the fatheads are, correct? I hope.
Yes.
At any rate, um, because I, I know two players in the boosters, um, they're getting a lot of phone calls from neighboring large school districts that love the idea, and they want all the info, so I'm gonna anticipate that within the next couple of weeks, you're gonna see them at our neighboring large schools, and what I would, I would ask of you, Mr. Goodme, we've had enough of probably negative publicity on the front pages of the paper, it might be a great idea to get in there first, because we are first, and now the big schools are following suit, and they've got, I mean, they're getting the contacts and everything that our people set up, and, um, pretty soon you're gonna see the fatheads at all the schools, so-
I'll contact the Voice in the Time Share tomorrow.
Thank you. A phenomenal, phenomenal idea, thank you, Susan.
Mr. Goodme, I don't know who does the social media page, but, um, if somebody wants to share, I know I've seen it on Facebook with the booster shares it on their page, but I'm not sure if I've seen it from like the Memphis Community Schools or the high school, elementary, if they can share it too?
Absolutely.
There were some very creative pictures, um, put together for that as well, it's very good. Appropriate, just creative.
I didn't know if we had to change our policy on animals, cause I believe we have a few bogs in this animal.
You know, did you notice my name was Elvis? So, you know, I brought Elvis.
Elvis and Pedro, um-
Yes.
From that movie, uh, Napoleon, uh-
Holy, there too, so, yeah, so you have to give him credit as well.
Very, uh, very, very good. All right, anything else? All righty, thank you, Mr. Goodme, um, okay, board roundtable, um, certainly anyone on the board's chance to discuss anything they would like to discuss or bring up. Ready, set, go.
Uh, this is Mrs. Durk, can I just start, Mr. Cook?
Absolutely.
Um, I just first wanna thank everybody for, you know, the, the warm welcome this last month being on the board, um, all the assistance that have been given to me, um, by Mr. Goodme and Mrs. Hile, um, the rest of the board members, and how to locate certain policies, procedures, uh, everybody's been very helpful, um, there definitely is a lot of information, as Ms. Rosenau had said earlier, um, on locating these policies, and I too am a paper person, but in trying to navigate the computer and locate these, um, so I do appreciate everybody's, uh, support and kindness and, uh, answering my questions, my many questions. Then I would just like to say, I really wanna give a, a huge shout out to our administration, um, the staff of Memphis schools, uh, our teachers, our families, our students, um, we have really set a high standard, and this goes off of us maintaining in person, um, for our elementary school and in our high school, um, many surrounding schools are not doing that, and, and Memphis has really set a high standard for their school districts to reach that goal as well. And I know it's not been smallest, uh, there's been some of this, where we've had cases, that our administrators have done their due diligence in making sure the tracking, the spread, uh, has not gone any further, and I just am very proud of the district, and, um, wholeheartedly, everybody has been working together, um, during this very unprecedented time, um, this last year's been something I don't think any of us could have ever been prepared for, and I just really wanna say that I'm just very impressed and very proud of the Memphis district and staff and the family to make this happen, and, um, we may be small, but we're mighty, and I think that's really proving out there, um, to other school districts, and, um, kinda bounds off of this, this is just what I said too, with the fatheads, as simple as that is, we set a standard, and now people are looking at Memphis in, in a more positive view, um, and I'm really happy to see that positive view being shown instead of any negativity, so just, it's not to all the staff, and, um, the public continues, don't wanna jinx anything, but just great job, all around. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Durk? Anybody?
Yep, this is Mrs. Rosenau, I just wanna update the board, I recently completed my, um, CBA class on policy, that was fun, I learned a lot, I have about twelve pages of notes, um, and I'm looking forward to sitting in on the next, uh, policy committee meeting. I am enjoying the CBA classes, they're, uh, it's, it, this is, uh, this is a nice challenge for me, so, um, again, I appreciate Laura, Nancy, Brad, Marty, any of you that I've contacted, cause I'm always asking questions, and, um, I can't thank you all enough.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody else?
Um, yes, um, Marty, this is Karen, um, I, we had another ARESA meeting, um, this last Tuesday during our snowstorm, um, that's the one nice thing about a Zoom meeting, you can be sitting in your, in your house and, and not have to worry about going outside, um, um, but, um, did wanna, uh, touch base, um, we are having a general membership, um, meeting with all the school districts, and so the, the email will probably be coming out shortly, it's gonna be March sixteenth at six PM, and it's only gonna be for one hour, it's from six till seven, and it will, um, basically, who our speaker will be is Jennifer Smith, which you see that on your emails with our legislative updates and that, and so she is gonna be our keynote speaker, um, and she's gonna talk for about fifteen, twenty minutes, and bringing up, I mean, update on the budget process and any hot topics that are active right now in the legislature, and also, um, we will be having, um, uh, Dr. Kevin, um, Miller, who will bring also, he's gonna be unveiling new programs that are gonna be, um, unveiled for the fall time, um, that we are helping, you know, some new pro, programs in the tech, um, and so that's super exciting too, and then also he'll be giving any updates, um, uh, that go, things that are going on in tech, and so that's just something I encourage all of our board meter, meet, our board members, I'm sorry, board members to, just to, to join in on that Zoom meeting, and, and hopefully there'll be a lot of boards that are all joining in on that, cause it, it sounds like it'll be really great, and we don't even have to go out of our house to go to it. Also, um, we do offer three scholarships to the, um, we used to offer one per, um, they were six hundred dollar ones, but we, we've lowered the amount, it, and, um, we've opened it to all the districts, um, three one thousand dollar scholarships, um, we took away it being just the education degree, it can be any degree, and as of, um, you know, as of just last Tuesday, there were only three people that had, out of the entire Sinclair County, all the school districts that had applied, and so our deadline is March fifth for this, so, um, I need, uh, so Brad, if you wanted to put in a word, or if Matt's still on there, you know, it'd be nice, you know, it'd, it'd be great, I did ask, and there were no Memphis people that had, had applied at the time, but, um, I'm not on that when they, um, you know, when they finalize who it is, but, you know, right now, there's only three people that applied and there's three scholarships, so, I mean, that's, you know, and we are still keeping the deadline at March fifth, so hopefully we get some Memphis kids in there that, that are trying to, to grab up some scholarships too, that would be really great to see their names there too, so just let me give that update, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McQ, so March sixteenth, six to seven, one hour, everybody be there. All righty.
Karen, Mr. Karen, will you be sharing the Zoom link for that?
Um, actually, Chris, um, uh, the secretary for the RESA, Dr. Miller's secretary, she will be putting that out to the school districts, I don't know if she gives it to Laura and Laura passes it on, I'm not quite sure how that works, Laura, I know that when it's coming time, um, they will take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
If I receive it, I'll make sure it's forwarded to the board.
Hey, Mr.-
All right, thank you, Mrs. McQ.
Just one other piece of information, um, the Lions Club from Community Foundation had a random act of kindness, and they gave us some more money to help with anybody in the community that's in need of food, um, so if Brad, or Matt, or Susan, or anyone in that community knows of a family that could use some additional support right now, uh, please let me know, and I will make sure that it happens.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson, anybody else? I have, uh, one thing I'd like to do, I'd like to quickly recognize fourteen people, um, I can't see you guys right now, so if you're rolling your eyes, uh, I would, I would do the same thing, but you won't when you hear who they are. So, um, I saw today that our honors, uh, students were honored, um, on the Memphis Community School Facebook page, so I'm sure, so I'm sure, uh, someone's recording this, so let's, uh, get on, uh, um, record here as congratulating our two thousand twenty-one honor students, um, cumulata three five through three seven four, we've got Nicole Morgan-
This call is now being recorded.
Angela Mosser, and Gaisley, Joshua White, and Gwyneth Gombeski. Um, in magna cumulata, three seven five to three eight nine, we have Kaylee Rothwell, Bradley Clark, Hunter Weidman, and Ryan Schuster. In summa cumulata, uh, three nine or above, we have Seth Steer, Jenna Cobs, Chloe LeVoe, Katie Cook, and Joseph Getner, and our salutatorian is Seth Steer, and our valedictorian is Katie Cook. So congratulations to all of those, uh, fine young men and women representing us as, uh, scholars, uh, for our school, so I can't think of a better way to end, uh, tonight than that. Is there anything else from a roundtable perspective? I do not believe we have anything on tonight's docket for a closed session, is that correct, Mrs. Hiling?
That is correct.
That is correct.
All righty, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Does Amanda make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-eight?
Nine twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, Texas time, Texas time, sorry, nine twenty-eight.
Motion by Mrs. Bobstein, an hour behind, seconded by Mrs. Thompson, let's take a roll call.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. McQ?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosenau?
Yes.
Mrs. Durk?
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned, have a good night, guys. Talk soon.
Hey, Memphis, say hi to her, man.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.